All right, now being 6 o'clock, we'll call the Monday, November 20th, meeting of the Board of Selectment to Order. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Erica Geo Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. We do not have any appointments today, so we can jump right into updates and discussions. Town Administrator, update on townhouse visit? Do we have anything?
We did visit.
Okay.
I think John and I both got a chance last week, and I had a good opportunity. She got to watch the Den at Feast experience, and I think she picked up on sort of the sweetness and the uniqueness, and nice start. I don't know how much John indoctrinated her. Hopefully, she's left smiling.
So I took her to the transfer station.
Start out with the thing!
Our claim to fame. And let's see, we stopped at the club, did a tour of the club. Mike Murphy was there. And then we went to the Old Town House, did a tour of the Old Town House. And then we drove around Woodlands and showed her the, sort of hit all the pieces of the town.
You brought it to the club?
So it was nice. I brought it to the club, yeah.
We started with the transfer station.
The club room?
It's an important part of the town, yeah!
You've got to learn the whole town.
Exactly. Well, very nice. Yeah, good.
Guess she's still talking to us.
Yeah, but yeah, she hasn't quit. I told her I probably won't be able to get together with her until after she starts, because it's coming on Thanksgiving, so I don't know if you want it, but I said, you know, I know Mark is anxious to show you around too. So I don't know if you want to schedule something.
You know, I'll drag her around to the other haunts that John maybe missed along the way. And of course, we're all going to have plenty of time, one-on-one with her along the way. Boy, she's awfully open to and real interested in what we are thinking and real interested in melding her ideas.
Terrific.
I'm thrilled.
That's great to hear.
We do have an update on her office.
Yeah.
The restroom will be taken out.
Okay, so you're just going to remove the head and the upper bit?
No, everything in there is from this original building.
1912, something like that.
I wasn't here then. But they don't know if that would be the problem.
Okay.
That if they were to valve the toilet itself.
I think it would make sense.
That it would even cause the problem, I mean, like resolve the issue and the problem with the smell. So they're just going to take it out and cap it off. Do you want to get some shelves put in there?
I think we'll let Steve handle it.
Okay.
Okay?
Budenholzki's plumbing was here today.
Tom Ruboski, yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, he's going to cap it off, right?
Yeah, and he's going to do the cheapest route. He's, at the time, you're done.
Yeah.
It may not even work.
A few under here, a few under there, and then it might not even work, and then I come back to you there.
And that's going to happen this week, the capping?
They have to shut the water to the building off, so it will happen on a Friday, hopefully this Friday. He's kind of straight out. It might be the following Friday.
Okay.
Yeah.
That sounds perfect.
The way that it looks.
Okay, good. I think that's a good plan.
She can work out of the conference room for a week if she has to.
Sure.
You can have Steve. Steve will be building the cabinet that you would like.
Oh, really?
Yes, he's going to, we're going to handmade cabinet from Steve, and it will match the front of this that we have with the raised.
He is good, I tell you.
And painting, and he's, he said, "I'll make one, and I'll make it match the room and paint it."
He painted the podium, so that it now matches.
Oh.
And took the cross off, which was nice.
Very nice.
We'd have to equal, we'd have to have the Star David up there.
And the other singers.
Others.
From many different traditions.
Exactly, there's not enough room on the podium.
But he does a nice job, he really is.
Since he's building and doing some other things, I figured a room got up there.
Do you want under, we can either do it now or under technology. We did get an email from.
Yeah, right, where do you want to handle Elizabeth's request?
Let's jump in now, I think.
All right, so she was hoping to get a new laptop instead of the refurbished?
I mean, I don't have a problem with that. We're going to need a laptop here anyways, which would go inside the cabinet, so we can take the one that was in the town coordinator's office and just use that. Mike's looking at it anyways to make sure that it's, you know, got the right amount of memory.
Okay.
So if she wants to do that, it's up to her.
Yeah, it feels like a small thing, and her being comfortable with the machine, she's going to be wedded to, makes sense to me.
Okay, yeah, me too. All right, so I'll let her know that it's okay and.
Now, the emails, though. The whole idea of having her take over, switch so that the town coordinator emails role to the town administrator, was so that there'd be a history.
There'd be what?
A history. In other words, if you, like, we want to go back and look at Green Community. I don't want to be the one to go in there every time we have something that we say, "Oh, we've got to find out where Dale was on this." I mean, that's going to be part of her role.
How many emails does he get?
Now, he gets, say he gets five. How many does he get that, "I don't delete," one or two, if that?
So it's mostly just kind of information?
He probably gets five to eight, and I just delete them because they're.
Okay. Do we have an out-of-office for him, where he's no longer?
Yeah, that was the piece I wondered about, if we could just redirect future ones to her, and then she could go back and look at Dale's old stuff.
Yeah, can we archive it, like, in the cloud, keep it?
Yeah, but all we were going to do was change the town coordinator to town administrator. So in effect, when she, when those emails came in, she'd be able to look at them, say, "I don't want any of these," and unsubscribe to them, get rid of them. But she'd still have all the history, which goes back, I think, seven years, five years, seven years.
Don't forget Dale's email doesn't go back that far.
No, but there was some work done, so that there's, I think, this, this 2012, I know, because I went in and took a look at some. There is a missing piece. We're not going to do anything about it now, because, you know, it's gone.
So, but she has a new email address?
It'll be her, it'll be townadministrator@climpson.town.us.nas, whatever.
So I can't quite think this through completely. I mean, can we leave this a little open until she comes and see if she's got another idea?
We can, but she's got to be the one who takes over the history of it.
Yeah, understood.
And how's she going to know? Like, Dale had it set up so all the stuff that comes out of the state rolls in there.
Yeah.
She's not going to know who, unless she goes in and says, "Okay, comp buy, buying for the Commonwealth."
Okay.
Okay? If it just rolls to her now, I don't know why she'd want to do it the other way. But I'm willing to wait until she comes in and talk it out.
Yeah, why don't we, and I'll tell her that, you know, let's, we'll talk more about that. Maybe she could just maintain his while she's got her own, so that she's aware of what's going on, but she's not, you know, getting all of his junk in her email address.
But somebody has to go through and eliminate it, and it's got to be her.
It would have to be her.
But, I mean, she could go in once a day or something.
And check his emails.
Yeah.
Why would you want to do that, though? It's like the new assessor coming in.
Yeah.
Whoever that is.
Yeah.
Are you going to say, "Okay, we're not going to roll the history that's under them?"
No, I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not fully getting the concept down.
I'm not fully getting the concept either. I don't know if you even want to talk to Elizabeth about it, to understand.
Why don't I show you after? We'll go open up Dale's computer for a minute and take a look at it.
Or we can just hold it until she starts, and I'll tell her, we'll talk about it when she starts. Okay, all right, so why don't we just do that then?
That's good by me.
Okay, so I'll let her know about the, all right. Electrical aggregation decision.
So there was a decision today, and actually, at the last Monday phone conference, the thought was that these optional rates weren't going to be attractive enough. So the bad news is, the basic rate that EverSource came up with is kind of atrociously high, and so that these rates that could be obtained through aggregation are actually pretty good. And the other good news is, albeit there are 10-gabillion choices here on the term and which company to go with, it was very, very clear that our standard rate, if we accepted an aggregation rate, would be about 10% cheaper than what EverSource was offering. So we went with that, and we committed to that.
Okay.
And then, I think, some other good news, those that would like to opt in to 100% green rather than the basic rate that's 20% green, it's only a couple percent more to do that. So we did just what we talked about last week. We committed to a basic rate that's better, and the townspeople will have an option for those that want to go completely green to so do it.
So everybody will be in, and you have to opt out?
I think, I, so more of the stuff will be coming through. I think the basic aggregation, as I understand it, is, and I'm not absolutely sure this is true, but they could opt out of that, they would have to opt out of that. What they would be opting into is 10% more.
Right, is the basic rate.
Right. The green thing they would have to opt into, so, and I think Colonial will continue to help us with educating the public about what's happening. All that stuff, the new rates would start January 1st, and that will cover six months. There was nothing attractive about a more extended rate.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Is this the meeting for the solar, next door?
Next door. But you're always welcome here! All right, Green Community paperwork. I have the paperwork, and I have the list from Lori, and she asked me last week how we were coming with this, and I told her we're working on it, but that, you know, we were hoping to get some help from Dale, but that didn't happen. So I have the files, and after this meeting, I was going to go down and talk to the Building Department, to see if we can get some of these questions answered. Have there been any new building permits since the stretch code became the sole effective code? That's a question for them. Have any clean energy projects projected, applied for approval under R&amp;D manufacturing? Is there right to permitting? So a couple of building permit questions, I was going to see if we could get these. I don't think we ever obtained the software, the MEI software, I don't think we have that.
I looked in there, and I looked at my computer, it was nothing.
Okay, all right, so.
What does MEI stand for, do we know? I'll ask Mike.
Mass Energy Insight Software.
Okay.
Which is used to monitor your diesel, gas, heating oil, and energy. So I think what we're going to have to do too, is we have to do a narrative with this. So I think we're going to need to see, have Barbara pull electric bills for us, for the buildings, so that we can see just what we've paid. Not necessarily the bills, but just what the warrants, you know, what's been paid for those.
I did a project for Dale for that already, if he didn't take it with him.
He didn't take it with him.
Can you find it? Because we have to tell them what the energy savings were.
It's probably in his, either in his Destra or in his Credenza.
It was somebody else for solar that wanted all of our bills, so I'd have to look.
Okay, see if you have.
And I went back a year.
Okay.
And we broke it down, because there's a lot of electric bills.
But there's a lot of buildings we're talking about here, okay.
And they wanted to see the wattage that was used, so it was.
Okay, yeah, let's not reinvent the wheel. If you've got it, that'd be perfect. Okay, so we'll plug away on this, and then, so I'll let you guys know too, I mean, we can go through right now, vehicle inventory. We probably already have that.
It's a CPI thing that we did.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Yep, so we've got that. Copies of your Green Community application, Table 9, which I couldn't find Table 9 in here. There isn't Table 4.
Why can't they send us that? They must have it, whoever has.
I would think so, yeah. You know, I can ask for it.
The one thing the former town coordinator said, and it's probably part of the same office, but he suggested contacting Seth Pickerings.
Seth?
He was right on top of much of this stuff, and might be able to help with it. Obviously, some of it is in-house, but some of this that we don't understand, I think he can.
Okay, so let's go, Seth, see if we can get a copy of that. If you used Energy Conservation Incorporated, please forward copies of the Energy Improvement Reports. We didn't use ECI, we used TNT. So I have.
Before my time.
TNT's stuff, and I asked them to give us everything that they had, so hopefully that one's squared away. Clean, have any clean energy projected, I don't know, projected applied for approval, I think there's missing a word, projected projects maybe, or clean energy projects? So this is Building Department, so we can go down and check with Building. And then, new building permits since the stretch code, that's Building Department. Has Climpson received any new renewable energy generation systems?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm not sure I would be aware of it.
Would that be either solar or wind, presumably, right?
Right, and as a town, we haven't.
And the town, no, the town has not.
No, I mean, there might be people that have, but we haven't.
See, what is that?
Any new renewable energy generation systems? Has Climpson received any new renewable?
So are they using Climpson as the town of Climpson, or Climpson as the geography?
Yeah, I hear that as town, as that town.
I hear that as the town too, so.
There's no way we wouldn't, well, I don't think there's any way we would necessarily know about what private citizens have done.
Right, right.
Well, we know about the ones, though, like Borrego and those that have.
Yeah, but, you know, private citizens putting solar panels.
You know what, I can ask for a clarification on that.
Because are they, do they mean, we get that net metering credit? Is that what that means?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
It was the way one of the solar projects was written, with that SinCapia with Marie Solar Way LLC.
Maybe.
And they give us credits, and they give us, they give us checks.
Well, I'll ask whether this is, for town, is she talking Climpson, does the town have any new systems, or do, are there new solar projects in the town? So I'll ask for that one.
We are getting net metering credits ourselves, and they send us a check. It was the way it was written.
Okay. Did Climpson have any new buildings put online that replaced old buildings? No, I don't think so, not to this, so that's a no. She doesn't, so, says if yes, square footage. Fuel use from all town-owned vehicles, including exempt vehicles.
I don't know how they're going to keep.
I know the chief upstairs has got, like, cards that they use, maybe, and I would think he would probably be the biggest user of fuel.
Fire would probably, fire, I would think, because of the trucks.
I don't know.
They get like five miles to the gallon.
Okay, did we break this down anywhere on warrants or bills?
I would think that Christine could get the warrants that were done, but I don't know who they use for fuel.
No, we don't, we don't need to know who they use.
Do they want her vehicle?
Let's see. Fuel use for all town-owned vehicles, no, just fuel use for all.
So can't we just look at how much we spend on fuel?
That's what I'm thinking.
And, you know, use an average for cost per gallon, which will give us the number of gallons.
I could probably get.
Let's do that. Do you want to do that?
Christine.
Okay.
Sure.
We just need to do the best we can on this.
Yeah, exactly.
Do in two weeks. All right, so we will get the fuel use.
So that would be fire, police.
And highway.
And highway.
Would be the big ones, yeah.
Yeah, that's close enough.
And then just do the best you can.
Maybe COA, probably they don't use much fuel.
All right, does Climpson use MEI software? No.
Good.
Can you please provide information from MEI annual report? No, because we don't have the software. Energy conservation measures. Does Climpson use an Energy Management Service Agreement? I don't think we do.
No, no.
There's one from TNT, there's an EMS thing in here, but it's not, it's not agreement, agreement. Oh, it's actually ECM, it's not even EMS. So no, we don't have that. Does Climpson use any energy produced by renewable energy within the community? So.
Say that again, does Climpson use?
Do we use any of the energy produced by renewable energy within the community? So are we getting any of the electricity that's being generated by any of these solar farms?
No, it comes out of, we signed up with Mata Poisa, wasn't it? I'm not sure.
But that's not out of Climpson.
No, but I.
Yeah, or, but the stuff we generate goes to, is, the credits and the electricity go to a different town.
Okay.
I think.
Okay. And they just got, for example, solar PV systems installed at the school or municipal buildings, and we don't have any solar.
Correct.
Okay, so no. All right, so then we need the narrative of the decrease in energy use in vehicles, so we'll have to work on that. Please describe any building stock changes that have occurred since the baseline year. Include the year and whether any changes are replacement, addition, removal, or renovation.
What's the baseline year?
I think it was 2013.
So all this windows and everything, that wasn't, that's probably done before 2013?
We can probably find that in here, because this has got a list of the projects, so I can, I can find that. Okay, so that'll be in the.
We've got gutters.
What?
Our gutters.
Yeah, gutters.
Electric gutters.
Okay.
The heated.
And the heating system, but that, that probably predated.
The, this grant?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can talk narratively about things we've done, like the Mata Poisa, you know, going to it, in the narrative.
Okay. Does anybody want to work on the narrative?
Do we have one, an old one?
Um, no, I don't think we've got anything.
How about another town?
I'll see if I can find one. I'll see if I can get one from Lori.
See if they, yeah, I'll take a shot if I had something to work from.
Okay. And you're waiting for some of the information, because you've got to have that.
Yeah, sure.
Thing that Bree's got.
Sure.
All right, have there been significant changes made to the site plan, design review criteria that would impact the ability of permit qualifying energy, clean energy uses in a timely manner? She said she assumes no, but just checking.
I think that's correct.
Okay.
No.
No.
Beautiful.
That's it?
Where would I go on their site to see?
On Green Communities?
Yeah, you got a website of any kind?
Um, yeah. That's TNT Energy. Actually, you've got Seth Pickerings. Do you want to reach out to Seth Pickerings to see if he can provide any of this information?
Uh, I can try, I don't.
All right, I've got Seth's email address. I don't see it right here, I'll email it to you.
No, I think Dale left it, so I've, I have.
Yeah, because he came in and talked to us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Seth is a good guy.
Yeah, that's.
He knows this stuff inside out.
Yeah, and he knows we're behind the eight ball on this, so I'm sure he'll help. In here, there's.
No, we haven't got enough time, I'll just do it over.
3/28/14 is when.
It's Thanksgiving.
This was supposed to have been done.
Okay, yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah. Okay, so we're in pretty good shape. Thanks.
You think.
We went through the list! That's a really good start!
Actually, it is, it is.
It is.
I mean, that, that gets it down to a bite-sized thing.
We've assigned tasks, okay. All right, green efficiency, so let's hold that one for next week, because we need to get this all done by December 11. So we'll just leave it on the agenda until we're done with it. Efficiency and regionalization grant letter of support. Halifax did provide a letter of support, and they actually applied for a grant as well, so now we'll see if this is something that we want to pursue, and.
I see.
I mean, we haven't gotten approval, it's just.
Oh, no, no. I see Sean Cronin went back at them to kind of understand, were we duplicating the money or was it separate?
Right.
So we'll see how it plays out.
All right, then, fire an EMS consultant MRI.
Really no update since we talked last night. It's internal in their system right now, and you had a chance to talk to them, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're up to speed.
Arcers whiteboard installation.
The only, the only piece left now is the wires, like, so we can do the Mac connections, how we hitch up the document projector. And Steve Pello said after Thanksgiving he'd be willing to come in and talk, so probably next week I'll try to get him.
Okay.
Just, there's a couple of little pieces missing. Apparently, Steve's off making a cabinet, so we'll put the laptop in it, we'll put the document projector in there, and we'll put all the wires and have a lock on it.
Nice.
But I was thinking we should have a combination lock, maybe, but whatever he does, I mean.
Yeah, that makes huge sense.
Right.
I always, while I'm thinking about it, I asked him if he would take a look at the Historical Society building too. Okay, we'll put that combination lock on the back, so that the key doesn't keep falling in the snow in the winter.
Okay, good idea.
So that's what's going on.
Great.
I'm sorry, did you, were you going to be inviting the Arcers gentlemen to come in for next week as an appointment, or?
No, no, it's really, I think, what we need, Steve Pello, who's the Technology Director for Silver Lake.
Okay.
But he may just want to do it off, not as part of a meeting, but just him and I getting together with, I think, Bob Cowling, and just talking through how we.
Wiring.
Yeah, because I want to be able to take those lights and be able to turn them off, and keep these on, things like that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that would make it easier to see the screen.
Yeah, just a whole bunch of little stuff. It shouldn't cost a couple hundred dollars, that's probably it.
Well, it's a, it's a beautiful system. I was telling John before we started that we had a, for the Housing Production Plan meeting, and we had the plan up, we had a laptop hooked up with the plan up there, and it made it so easy for us to edit it, that it really is a great tool, and I'm sure a lot of the boards are going to enjoy that.
Yeah.
For the people at home, too, I mean, if it, if it was videotaped, people could have seen, you know, the document that we're working on, and so it's going to be a really helpful tool.
And I think, you know, somehow we ought to have kids' movies and things like that.
Yeah.
Some fun things, yeah, absolutely.
So I'll mention it to Debbie at the library, and see.
There is no cover.
There is no cover.
No.
Okay.
There isn't one for this size board, so I have a small little sign up that I.
No, that, that's nice, yeah.
Okay, just so nobody would touch.
And there's no markers near it, so.
The lockers are here in my office.
Good, keep them there.
Under lock and key, perfect.
And there's no eraser, so people get the hint.
Okay.
But they did suggest, when he looked up, when he called Aker's, some of them have curtains up in front of it that they can slide over and move.
Like a premiere, yeah.
So it is something maybe down the line that if he ever put, and it could slide all the way over and away from it, maybe that's a good slide. It's an idea, because it will still deter people from.
From writing on it, okay. All right.
So no one take my board down.
Yeah, that was a good idea. All right, outdoor recreation plan, unfortunately with the Green Communities entering the mix, I did not have time to contact them, so I'll try to do that before next week. Old townhouse renovation.
Actually, we have a meeting tomorrow night with CPC, so we'll see what comes up.
Terrific.
Yeah, I think we have a, sort of a lot of issues, and it may take some time to sort them out and understand how best to do this, but at least get that process started. I have not heard from the circuit rider, again, the preservation circuit rider, and I think he's going to be really slow, but that would be an important piece in it. I don't think we'll come to any conclusions tomorrow night, but at least be clear on what all the issues are. One way or another, we'll get this done, and I think we have the wherewithal to get it done, it's just a matter of sort of dealing with the details.
I'm excited about it.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity, and it's good that you're, you're working together, and hopefully we can get some of these issues addressed. And if not, then we'll know, you know, other, that we have to pursue other avenues. Assistant assessor position, we did get a letter of resignation from the assistant assessor, and so she is officially finished, and I'm not sure if we've received the, I believe the posting is, has been updated.
Mm-hmm.
To include our email address, or yours, Bree, that if people wanted to apply for the position, they should submit their resumes to you?
Yes.
What's the date that those are due?
They said that this was going to, it's going to be on the MMA.
Yes.
Um, for a month.
Okay.
But it could stay there for thirty days, but the posting is usually two weeks.
Okay.
Um, I mean, in-house.
And it's, it is posted here now, and it's on the website?
It is posted on the town's website. It has been a link onto Facebook, so they can link onto our town website, and it's posted up front, and it is in the paper.
Terrific.
I would say we leave it on as long as MMA is, you know, when they come off, we'll come off.
So, but as these come in, this was a question that came up today, we're going to immediately get them over to the Board of Assessors.
Okay, yeah, yes. Ethan did request that in the email?
Sure.
Perfect.
To everybody?
Sure.
I'm not aware of the resignation, I wasn't included in the email from Thursday.
I think it is one of the confusions, is simply it was prudent, or it seemed easier having been, the previous one had some errors in it as far as where to apply, we're merely passing through. This is not our function to be.
No.
Um, reviewing these, or, that's the Board of Assessors, and we're just being a mailbox, really.
Yeah, at their request, so.
Yeah.
So we did, I did speak to Allison, and she has gotten, no, I did speak to Mike Rodriguez, the tech gentleman for us, the town, and the email will remain active. This.
Yeah, asked it.
Has to, because it will just go on to the next person.
Okay.
So, and there is no access for her, for our prior assessor, to access that from outside of it, so no password.
Oh, password has been changed, okay.
Nothing like that.
Okay.
It was never accessible for that.
I do think we want to stay close to the assessors, I mean, this is obviously a problem for them, and, but we do have this recap sheet that has to be submitted.
Right.
And it appears that most of the work is done, but, you know, it's, it's just the final piece, getting it all set up, and we want them to be successful, so.
So we have a meeting with them next Monday night.
On the classification.
On the classification. I think probably we should include in our agenda an update on the application process, and any thoughts on an interim assistant assessor. There have been a couple candidates out there as an interim that, that know how to do this.
Right.
Hopefully they're pursuing that, and I.
Did you give them names, or?
Um, I haven't, I mean, there are two names that keep coming up, with Steve Dunn and Susan Dugan, who are both experienced at this, and we just, until we get a new one, we just have to keep things moving.
Right, now Steve has got a full-time job, so.
Yeah.
But he said he'd be willing to have us on a very hard time, limited basis.
So I think. I mean, those would be things we'd want to ask them next Monday night, if they're moving ahead on that.
Right.
Okay.
And again, just because there's so much sort of chatter going on, and such risk of miscommunication, I, I think the board, this board fully understands that it's the duties and the responsibility of the Board of Assessors.
That's true.
And I think we totally want to stay out of the way, but just do anything we can to be supportive.
Right.
So I was asked about this last week with the prior assistant assessor, and I said when my board tells me what to do, then, and I get to go, I will release it to, so as soon as I get these resumes, I should forward them directly to the whole board of.
Sure.
Well, does, are you sending them to the whole board, or just Ethan? What did he request?
He just asked for them to, to get them, for his board to get them.
Okay.
At first I wasn't doing anything, because I did not know what to do yet.
Yes.
I was asked to, it was changed to me, and then it wasn't anywhere and forward them to us, so.
Well, Ethan's the chair.
Yeah, so, I mean, probably to the whole.
I would think the whole board, because this has got to move along pretty quickly if we're going to, if they're going to make a decision.
I agree, just, and to just be clear that there's complete transparency, so, you know, it makes a lot of sense.
So everything will go to all three of them?
Send them to Allison, I would suggest, unless you might want to ask Ethan.
Distribution as a whole group, so I'll send it to the whole group.
Okay.
So I have three as of today.
Good.
And I will forward them.
Terrific.
Great.
Perfect.
Thank you.
It's.
Okay, correspondence.
All righty.
What is, what do all these financial documents do?
Uh, the recap sheet, I believe, is, he submitted either December 1st or 15th.
So we, there definitely needs to be something down in the interim.
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
So we need to check with Barbara.
Okay.
I'll ask her and get a date.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, off we go. This is an announcement from manufacturing on the South Shore about a celebration and a program Monday, November 27th at 3:00 PM, that's next Monday. It's actually a bunch of mayors of, and CEO types of fairly large organizations, but I don't think I can make that, and.
Oh, I wish I could.
Manufacturing on the South Shore, it's kind of up your alley.
Can I take that? Yes, absolutely, on my, my alley.
How long is it?
Um, three, 3:00 PM. They probably have cookies.
And coffee.
Um, okay, uh, this is in, I guess it's an email, from Christine Kelly, the assistant treasurer-collector, writing on behalf of several of the employees in the townhouse, requesting that the selectmen open up dialogue regarding changing the hours of Monday night from six to eight, to five to seven. Have you guys seen this?
I heard about it today.
All right, so it goes on to say that residents have tried to stop by on their way home, and that the, we're not open until 6:00 PM, and it would be much more convenient that frequently, once people have gotten home and settled in, they don't want to come back, that they've checked with other towns and find that traffic is highest between five and seven, rather than six and eight. So the bottom line is that they're proposing, we discuss this and consider it.
Now, I know the assistant tax collector treasurer supports this. Are there others beside who?
She writes.
Is it only that, that position, or other ones?
No, she writes "we," it's collectively "we," and I think, though it's not defined in this email, I think it is several of the, several of the people that usually work here on Monday night.
Well, the town clerk's going to go their own way, I mean, that's up to them, they can do whatever they want.
I mean, I, I actually, when I first read it, I wasn't so excited about it, but I, I think it actually makes sense, and I wonder if it wouldn't be something we just try for a while and see what happens.
I think it makes sense, and.
I agree.
Talking to Christine, she said, you know, from seven to eight, there's never.
Right.
There's one or two, maybe.
I mean, it feels like we're not locked into it, we try it for a while, if it doesn't work, uh.
You do see people, I'm here sometimes late, and they will come, they'll knock on the door, if someone's left the door open, you know, they'll come in.
Yeah.
And Roxanne is also here, the veterans agent, early, she's here, I believe, four-thirty is.
Yeah.
She is here, and we do have people that will drop a payment off, or I have to come back sick, they will say it.
Yeah.
Verbal, if you run into them.
All right. So what do you want to do, you want to just give it a try?
Give it a try, maybe start the first of the year, so people, do we need to wait that long, but the first of the year, so just have a chance to advertise it each week?
Yeah, we need to get it up on Plimpton, help them Plimpton.
Yeah, in the paper.
On the website, in the paper.
In the paper, and actually, even on the door, starting January 1st.
Yeah, on the door, for sure.
Yeah.
Do you want to go with the first of the year, or December 1st?
Not December 1st, that's right around the corner.
Yeah.
You guys are anxious, or.
And then we'd have January 1st off.
Well, can we find out who all is, who all wants to try this? So that if we put something in the paper, that we're putting out accurate information, because I don't know if Tara's going to want to do this or not, and it would be nice if we could, ideally, it'd be nice if everybody did it, and we could then communicate that to the paper, so that they could get it out there.
I do know that they talked to Elizabeth, she thought it was a nice idea also.
Okay.
When they were talking about it.
I have to talk to Kathy downstairs, and also Kathy Ferguson.
Well, do you want to put something around?
Because it wouldn't affect meetings, people could still do a meeting and start at 5:30 or 6 o'clock, it's not.
Yeah, it doesn't affect meetings, they can do what they want.
Want to poll all, everybody and see?
So we poll everyone, and then decide next week, and maybe aim for middle of December, since everyone's hot to try on this, and.
Sounds good.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay, uh, this, oh yeah, this is from the Hayward Company, letting us know that they're not going to renew their earth removal permit, and sending us a check for $36, and a report on previous year's stuff. And there's a very nice letter associated with it, again, letting us know they're not renewing, that they are going to continue other agricultural operations, and actually are looking into the possibility of a sawmill. The end to that led, and lists all the other farm things that they do, ranging from composting to equine boarding and training. The last sentence, or next to last paragraph says, currently the town holds a cash surety for $10,000, plus any accrued interest at this time, a request that these funds be returned to us. It has been a pleasure working with you, in a mutually beneficial relationship. I, I assume that what this means is that there was a cash surety during the earth removal operations.
Yes.
And I wonder, do we need an exemption or something before we release the money?
I did speak to Bob, and he.
It came, this originally was through a lawsuit, and the town lost, and had to give the gravel removal permit, and there was concern that there would be damage to Ring Road and the little bridge because of the earth removal. So I think that's the reason we got the bond.
Well, we don't have any bonds from other cranberry companies, do we?
Well, this is the only active.
That's the only active.
Right, so if it's just for the gravel, I would say.
It is, it was just for the gravel.
Did you want an inspection done by the selectmen and anybody else?
We should do an inspection and make sure that it's left, that everything's, you know, squared away, and.
Yeah, we'll have Bob and I went out, Bob Colling and I last time, so.
Okay, and I went out, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, as long as, I would have him go along, take some pictures.
Okay.
Just so that there's.
Okay. Can you let Jeff know that we just want to do the final inspection, and, okay. Perfect, and then you should, in the file, there's probably all the documents about the bond.
Yes, that would be with Colleen.
Okay.
So I can speak to her.
Okay.
About that, and how to get it released, and what to do.
Right.
Um, this is some correspondence, or, or, this is through the Board of Assessors, making sure they have the proper documentation for next week's hearing on classification, think they're okay on that. This is a letter from the Attorney General's Office, they are, have, they, the Attorney General has approved our Article 29 from last year's town meeting, and also have approved Articles 9, 25, and 26. Apparently there were some issues with the posting that was done from the planning board, and this has all been untangled, as, so they have all been approved. I guess one of the issues that must have come up, I'm reading between the lines here, is that there's a different effective date for general bylaws and zoning bylaws, and maybe they got into problem last time on that, but, so in any event, any procedural things have been straightened out, and we're a little clearer, I guess, going forward.
I think the, one of the things that drops out of this is now Tara will finalize the zoning and municipal bylaws, she'd been holding those, waiting for the approval.
Well, this, and this is pretty important, because one of these is the medical marijuana moratorium, so thankfully that this has gone through, and I think part of the problem was that there are people that are, you're required to notify on this or to post with, that doesn't necessarily make sense, like the medical marijuana was supposed to go to Department of Housing and Community Development. You wouldn't automatically think that you need to notify them. So now Deb knows that there are some people that wouldn't necessarily make sense, that need to be notified of these bylaws, that, so now we know.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Warrants, Verizon 338, US Bank 155, Plymouth Rock 120, Comcast 118, Steve Sarno?
Sarno, that's Steve.
He's a custodian.
Oh, yeah, $10, Verizon $2, and Area 58, $14,00632. That's merely passing the money that came in to.
That was as of Thursday, so.
And I, I think I mentioned it last week, it's actually quite a bit more than we had originally estimated, and there had been some concern along the way that, you know, with people cutting cable a little, that there would be less revenue, but if anything, the revenue's going up.
Perfect.
Which is good for Area 58, and probably good for Comcast. Plimpton Halifax Express article about a marijuana grow facility possible in Halifax, Sunrise at 6:41. The center pages are Plimpton, or Halifax rather than Plimpton, but a bunch of pretty colorful pictures about the Veterans Day wreath ceremony, solemn but reverential expressions. And then, lastly, a note about local author and former Plimpton resident Ken Brock is doing, I guess maybe a, a reading of his new narrative nonfiction at 7:00 PM on November 30th, at 30 Evergreen Street, and that benefits Hope Floats Healing and Wellness Center, really pretty cool organization. And, so that's there, and I think with pleasure, a report that that completes correspondence.
All right. All right, dates to remember, we're meeting next Monday, which is 11/27, so we'll have the tax classification hearing then. What time is that set up for?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. All right, we wanted to, the Housing Production Plan Committee wanted to meet with us as well. We do six o'clock to present you with the plan.
Great.
All right, so we'll schedule.
Yeah.
Housing Production Plan, the whole committee will be here.
Okay, so you'll have to post the meeting?
Yes, we'll have to, can you post us? Thank you. And then we're meeting 12:04 and 12:11. The townhouse is closed this Thursday for Thanksgiving. Board's goals for coming year, financial management, I'm still waiting for the CIP plan in Word from Monica, so that we can edit it.
Good.
And you've got the vehicle inventory part of that, Bree, right, for the, that we can use for the Green Communities? Because you put that together and provided that to Monica.
That was for the CIP?
For the CIP?
Yeah, it's in there, so we'll just pull it up.
Pull it out, perfect. All right, public safety.
They meet a week from this Wednesday, come hell or high water, I'll be at that meeting, that's the last one before, hopefully before the whole project goes out to bid.
Is that for the public safety?
Mm-hmm.
I'm waiting for approval for a bill to get paid from the Congress. I sent it to the board.
You sent it to Colleen?
The whole board.
You want to remind Colleen?
We can't pay them until they get all of the approvals, that was part of the procedure now.
Okay.[1735.66]
Maybe they're waiting for the meeting, or actually, they probably have to wait for the meeting.
Yeah, they'd have to vote to pay it. All right, anything else on public safety?
Nope.
Okay, all right, grants, just, we're working on the Green Communities grant and need to have that, the report done, the annual report by the 11th, that we need to have everything to OCPC, Lori Muncie, and she will put all this information together for us and that's the deadline to submit it. Volunteerism, anything new?
No.
All right. Technology?
No, I think we've talked about it, as we went through, so
All right. Social media, anything new?
Not until Elizabeth comes over.
Okay. All right, minutes from 11:06 and 11:13, we will do those next week, so we'll have three weeks' worth of minutes that we'll do on the 27th, and we had your minutes from the 13th, I thought they looked great.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes, the executive session minutes from 11:13 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One thing that, before we go to Ransom Raves, the accountant's contract, we need to talk about that.
Oh, yeah, we got the
Yes.
Back from David, which has basically said this is pretty straightforward.
I would say the only thing we do is just pass it by Barbara, make sure she's
Okay.
And we should vote in open session, I think, I think we voted in, or we voted in executive session to get the opinion.
We voted okay, subject to the legal opinion.
Okay.
Yeah.
But maybe that, I think probably it should be voted in open session.
Doesn't, that's fine.
So, maybe we can put that on the agenda for next Monday?
Sure, the town accountant's contract, okay, so
And I do want to say liquor licenses have gone out, they were delivered.
Okay.
Still waiting back for one, so that'll be next week also, they have to be signed in the month of November.
So, that's next week.
Plumpton Gas and Convenience is still pending.
Wow, okay.
So, I had said, as long as they sign it, they won't collect money or require insurances because it's in a transfer process, and that's how they sold their business. I have all the new insurance for the new people, so I can't see why do I need insurance coverages, they're not, there's no liquor there.
Okay.
Just as long as I get it signed, so they don't have to sign a new application and start all over again.
Okay, the transfer.
So that, you know
So, the other liquor licenses have to be approved in or the
They have to be signed in the month of November.
Signed by the applicant.
By the applicant.
We don't have to approve them, because we'll have to do an inspection.
Everything is done online now and they take our word as long as we have everything and I hit a button on the computer and off it goes.
Oh, so we're not signing anything now, they have to do, have all their paperwork done? Okay, all right.
So, it's a new, they're trying something new, they tried it last year, it didn't work, that's why we signed everything and I had to email. We only have three, so we're not huge.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, they let me just fax them everything and said, don't worry, there's blank ways.
So, you're gonna keep us honest.
Keep you honest.
Great.
Best way I can.
Okay, all right.
But, all right.
One other thing, I pulled together a book that I used, so I gave one to Elizabeth, okay, with the zoning bylaws, the street list, that type of stuff.
Nice, oh, she, I'm sure appreciated that.
Well, it's gonna be a test.
Yeah, exactly. All right, anything else before Ransom Raves?
So, Elizabeth will be here next Monday night?
Next Monday night.
Or gonna do the day thing and
No, I think she should be here, told her that was her seat, you know.
Yeah, we warmed it up.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that, yeah, she'll be starting 8:30 or 8 o'clock that Monday and then be here that night.
Well, if she wants to come in later, I mean
Yeah, she could.
Yeah, we never talked about some sort of greet and meet, you know.
Oh, yeah.
We need to, you know, people need to meet her.
Yeah.
I think we should do something in December, let her get in and get her office and
That's fair, yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Do something nice in December, holiday time, festive.
Yeah.
You know, in that regard, the one thing we haven't done is we probably each have an idea of what her priority, what might, we might recommend as her priorities, and I think certainly she's gonna have her own idea, and we chatted a little bit about that when I met with her last week, is that it should be a collective effort and that we don't necessarily need a list of priorities the next Monday.
Well, I did give her this, you know, that I'd given you guys
And, you know, and that's, I think that may be something I, well, I hope this is an ongoing thing over
This was just the first couple of weeks.
The first month, her getting a lay of the land, meeting people, and then collectively we come up with sort of a collective priority list.
Sure, yeah, and our priorities will probably change as things come to our attention
Absolutely.
And having her here
Is this the parking lot?
We just keep shoving it down.
Is that the parking lot?
No.
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 Am I adding the parking lot where guys put a lot of things in the parking lot?
We did, we parked a lot.
But you put a lot that has Elizabeth's name on it.
Yeah, we did.
So, is the meet and greet we're talking about, that would be that, a Monday night part of one of our meetings?
I would think so, I, you know
Citizens in town?
Bring in some, yeah, have an invitation go out, over the way, Plumpton Health and Plumpton, put one up around town, the club.
So, maybe we check with her and decide on which Monday night in December?
We should have some
The 11th or the 18th, maybe?
Right. Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, so we, well, we should remember to check with her next Monday.
Yeah, let's check with her next Monday.
Or maybe that can go on the agenda, meet and greet date?
Mm-hmm, set, yeah, set meet and greet date. Good idea.
Just lost my train of thought.
Do you want it in the evening or do you want something during the day where we're here and welcome, we can get cookies and crackers and wine?
You know, I think it's more for people outside the building than it is for inside, because inside, you can, you guys will all, you know, you'll pull it together into the room and I know Barbara will be baking cookies and
Something wrong with that?
No, there isn't.
Your cake today?
As long as they wrote me a risen.
Yeah, nothing wrong at all, you got it.
Any birthday, ma'am, one more new birthday. It's Barbara's birthday today, happy birthday, Barbara.
Oh, is it? Oh, happy birthday, Barbara, very nice.
Cake.
All right, anything else?
Nope, meet and greet.
All right, Ransom Raves, do you want to go first?
Oh, okay, so two or three, whoever made these displays, thank you so much, that's cute as all get out.
They are.
Very seasonal and very creative.
The students at the Denne.
Nice.
Those were on our table for the
The luncheon.
Thanksgiving feast, the luncheon that we had, so
So, that's one ran, one rave, next rave is people who work in this building and take their jobs seriously, who are dedicated to it, who are concerned the legacy they leave behind and leave a proper legacy of concern and duty. And my last rave is Elizabeth's coming.
All right, my rave is in the theme of Thanksgiving, that I'm very thankful for the town supporting and recognizing the need for professional help and that they funded the position at town meeting so that we could bring in Elizabeth because she is going to help all of us and the residents, the people that work here, it's just, the impact is, I think, gonna be significant and I'm so grateful for the residents to, that supported this position and working with you guys and everybody here at the townhouse, we have really, I think we've got a great group of people here who, as you said, are committed to doing a great job and providing outstanding service to our residents to the best of their abilities with our limited resources, so thank you to all of, everyone.
Yahoo.
Yes, yeah, I agree. My rave is for the Thanksgiving luncheon, I mean, I look forward to that all year, I wish we could figure out how to have a spring one, and maybe a Christmas one.
Ooh.
But it's just a fabulous time and I'm delighted that Elizabeth was able to come and get to know some people, and we had a chance to meet some people, there's a new Assistant Superintendent at Silver Lake Regional, she was there, so that was nice.
She was impressed with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, she was.
Kudos to our school, we have all three schools, Denne, Middle, and Silver Lake, which I always, I took her for a ride through those two, so, good.
Very nice. All right, well, with that being said, we'll wrap things up here and our next meeting will be next Monday night, we will be doing the tax classification hearing and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Yahoo.